I call being honored. It's great to see so many of you out here today. Some of our youth, our coaches and whatnot. We'll hear more about that later on. If you would please guide your guests from education. Our heavenly Father, we are so proud to be here tonight representing Harris County, whether it be from the governing side, or athletic fields, or our citizens who are out and about, touching others. We thank you, O Lord, for all of our citizens. We thank you for the beauty of Harris County. And we ask that you help us as a commission to conduct the business of this county such that we continue to maintain our quality of life and handle the growth that is coming, but handle it in such a way that we still have those wonderful things to call home. We ask, O Lord, that you be with our servicemen and women, our police officers, our sheriffs, and our first responders, and our firemen, as they protect us from whatever may come up. We ask, O Lord, that you continue to guide us and bless us, and thank you for the gift of your Son, Jesus Christ, as in his name. Amen. If you'd all please rise, I want to ask Ted Oxley to please read us in the pledge of allegiance.
Move your hands.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic, with its stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item on the agenda is the minutes from our last meeting, the meeting of September... What was it?
August.
October 16th. Do I have a motion?
Let's make it ours.
We're just trying to move ahead. We've got a motion and a second. I'll invite any discussion. All in favor, please signify raising your hand. Motion carries. The next is minutes of the call sessions of August 1, 5, 8, and 12, and also the work session of July the 18th.
Move your hand.
We've got a motion for approval and a second discussion. All in favor, please signify raising your hand. Motion carries. All right. Anyone sign up?
Ricky's going with it.
All right, then we will... Mr. Lenoir?
Kathy's going with the gentleman.
Okay, Kathy, okay.
Getting there. Mark, we have a lot of problems. Y'all are already addressing. Concern about the shoulders of the road. They don't feel wide enough, and they're extremely soft. And if you pull off a tire, you go down the field. Kids show up somewhere, get a picture, or push the dirt away. When they build the shoulders, all they do is put dirt up there, spread it out with grader, and pack it.
And then pack it all.
We haven't had rain, so they put it out.
I don't care if it's snow, Joe, the way they did that is not going to stay.
No, what I'm saying is, we haven't had a rain.
Oh, yeah. Exactly. So, we need to really look at that. Get some signs up on the road. Soft shoulders. Most speed limit signs. The existing stop ahead sign on Washington Road, the whole, needs to be moved closer to a new intersection.
On the Johnson Road, Johnson Road. You're talking on the other... I was referring to the Johnson Building and the other side.
There's not, yeah, there's not a stop sign there either. But on the other one coming from Washington Road up to where Washington and Morgan Cove meet, the sign is not. It needs to be closer to the stop sign because right now it's prior to the old existing entrance, and since the entrance is not a road anymore, everybody just blows past it. And then they don't see the other stop sign because it's right around the curve, which needs to be addressed as well.
You said they were going to address the curve. You didn't say what they're going to do to the curve. Does anybody know?
I don't know.
Because people...
There's a hill on the road.
It wouldn't be bad for people to log with the stop signs. You can't see someone coming around that curve.
Oh, you're talking about the shoulder of that new one?
Yes.
Yeah, they are going to address that. I was told that they would upgrade that now so we have better visibility.
And then the ditch is all over water. That's pretty much all we have.
I know they were out there today, and I have talked to them, and I know Mark has talked to them also, and they sure does, and they're going to... Whatever we bring to their attention, they can hear that we're going to hear it, so please keep us posted. We can pass that along.
That's all we have.
All right, thank you. Appreciate you guys. All right. We are so honored to have with us tonight the Harris County Senior Little League Baseball Team, which acquitted themselves very, very well, and terrific representatives for Harris County and all of its citizens. And we're going to read a resolution of achievement that we will spread on the minutes of Harris County. And I'll read that. It says, "Whereas Harris County Senior Little League Baseball Team traveled to Athens, Georgia to play in the double elimination state championship tournament from July 9 through July 12. And whereas the team faced Athens in the opening round of the state tournament and followed with West Point to post back-to-back wins, and whereas again facing West Point in the championship game, the team emerged as victor to capture the state championship title, becoming the first Harris County baseball team to do so. And whereas the team then traveled to Clearwater, Florida on July 23 to represent the state by competing in the regional tournament, ultimately placing fourth in the competition. Now therefore, the Harris County Board of Commissioners recognizes the Harris County Senior Little League Baseball Team for its outstanding performance during the 2016 season and resolves that this resolution of achievement be spread upon the minutes of the Board of Commissioners of Harris County, so retold the sixth day of September 2016." I would entertain a motion.
So move.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All right, the motion carries. I would like to introduce the manager of that team, Mr. Brad Hill. And the president of the Little League is Nick Erving. President Nick, like you and Derek, you heard from earlier, leading this in our pledge. We are just so thankful, so proud of what you guys have done for us. We are thrilled at your success, and I know that you represented Harris County well as you made your travels at the state tournament and then at the southeast. So, if y'all would please rise, I would love for us to be able to give you a big round of applause for your contribution. (Applause). Mr. Thorpe, can you get a picture for the newspaper?
Too tall?
Yeah, y'all, there's too big. Andy, you don't really need us in this, do you?
Can I say our names?
Count them for me.
One, two, three.
Thank you all very, very much.
John asked me to say a few words. My name is Ashley Marston. I'm the Assistant Director for the Recreation Department. Thank you guys so much for letting us come for you tonight, for presenting the void with this proclamation. It was an incredible feat what they did. A couple of things that came to our attention as the boys were playing down in Florida were that how well they demonstrated such good sportsmanship. They represented Harris County very well. Before and after games, they prayed together as a team with the opposing team, whether they won or lost. And this one kind of gets me every time I talk about it, but they were so well respected by their opponents that following their final game at the Southeast Regional, correct me if I'm wrong, when you all prayed with the team that you lost to, they stopped the game and had a moment of silence? Is that correct?
They stopped the game that was going on.
That was going on after you, yeah. Just wanted to make sure. I just wanted to let you guys know what wonderful boys and parents we have in this county. Thank you.
Thank you, Andy. The next item on the agenda is the resolution to accept Maple Creek Drive at Maple Creek Court and Maple Creek subdivision on Georgia Highway 315. The documentation is attached. Mr. Taylor, do you want to say anything about this?
Yes, sir. Just very briefly, that the resolution before you to accept the consayance of these streets in Maple Creek subdivision, all the documentation that is necessary under your ordinance has been supplied. There's a warranty deed, a right-of-way deed conveying the title to the land from the builder to you. There's also a bond for the road, as well as a commitment for title insurance, in which they will provide a policy of title insurance. And I recommend this to you because it appears to comply completely with your zoning regulations, maintenance regulations.
Thank you, sir. Do I have a motion?
Motion to accept.
Second. Motion to accept. Two seconds. Any discussion? All in favor, signify raising your hand. Motion carries. The next is the proposal for the subsurface evaluation for the new library site. And, Mr. Taylor?
Yes, sir. There were two bids that came in that were solicited by your 2WR, which is your architect, and the two bids were pretty close together. One came in for $5,400, another was $5,250, $150 apiece. Apart, rather. The lowest bid came for building in earth, and that is the recommendation from the architect. And I have viewed that, believe it, and it appears to be very similar, if not almost the same, as the higher bid of $150. But I recommend that to you. And what they'll be doing is, for $5,250, will be taking a study of doing the field work, lab testing, and whatnot of boreings on the site, and then furnishing those to the architect for subsequent bidding of the project.
All right. Thank you, sir. Do I have a motion?
Motion to accept.
Motion and a second. Discussion?
A couple things. Discussion. The general terms and conditions, page 6, section 10.1, talks about, hopefully we'll never have to deal with this, but mediation or arbitration provides that if we have mediation or arbitration, then that would have to take place in Birmingham.
That is a change that I was going to tell Maxon, we always did make this, is that change is mediation in Birmingham, and also we need to take out the arbitration section and only put in the jurisdiction of the use in Harris County Superior Court. So we'll pick out that. Other than that, that's the only changes in the...
Let's tell that album. The other issue would be the present area of the document. The governing law being uniformed. Interestingly, it says that in action, that's because of Bibb County, Georgia, which is going to be interesting. Obviously, it could change the heads.
Right. And there's also another one that I had toyed with, the limitation of professional liability, 5.2. I, you know, we probably need to take that out, is that it says that we agree that the total liability of the consultant group will not exceed $100,000. And it may be that that's, you know, that our damages are greater than that, so we need to delete 5.2 as well.
So do you need 5.2 or deleting 10.1C and changing 10.1B to read Harris County instead of Birmingham, Atlanta?
Right.
That's the same.
I'm just curious, do we know where Building in Earth is located? Where do they...
I think they're out of Queens.
Maybe in here somewhere, but I haven't seen it.
I believe they're in...
I'm just curious.
There you go. Yeah, I was going to say Building in Earth has a strong presence in the area. They have multiple offices. They have a very strong presence in the center.
All right, any other discussion? All in favor, signify raising your hand. Motion carries. All right, the next one, we just heard from, like, Mr. Lee Martin, who's the 2WR, who are the designers and the architecture on our new library. A lot of work has been going on, and Lee's going to bring us up to date on where we are at this point in time, so that she gets her first sneak peek of kind of the layout of this library. And he can also then begin to discuss any timelines with you, so that we know when we're going to get going on this. But this contract that we just approved, the subsurface evaluation, that is key to...
We're never going to see this again.
Before any work does start, so... Getting closer to coming to reality.
I wanted to first just to thank you guys for the opportunity of allowing us to be your architect. We're the architect of community centers as well. We're excited about the opportunity to expand the community function of this site. Just wanted to give you a little bit of background on how we got to this point. We teamed up with a library consultant, Tim Wilson, top library consultant in the nation, very well-recognized, very, very effective partnership. We began with some brainstorming sessions with the staff, Keith from the regional director. We worked with them over the course of four days, doing intense brainstorming sessions. We did a lot of observations on how the library works, watching patrons, we went to other libraries in the area, looking back, and presented our findings and kind of our initial take back to the staff. We had a little more brainstorming sessions, thinking about what the needs are, this is what we see, is what the consultant sees in other libraries, what works, what doesn't work. We then began to do some community focus groups. We opened Sharet to the public. We also had an online survey that we ran for several weeks, and had really, really good feedback from the community about what's not working, what's not working in the current point, what people are expecting, and like to see in the new library. I want to start with the first kind of how the relationship works with the existing community center. We did the master plan for that entire site many years ago, and we actually decided to library a little closer to the road, that's began to study this more, it actually makes more sense to place it a little bit closer to the community center and create this little outdoor protected space against the forest that'd be used as community gardens and children's activity center. We've introduced the additional parking, but we want to keep the areas of the windows, we don't have a lot of landscaping right there in front of the windows, so it's not a sea of asphalt in front of your windows at the library.
Do you have any spaces for the parking lot of the library?
That's a good question. Right now, they're at the what's required for code for just the library. And some of the discussions I've had with John, and actually, your code's going to crack, you have a little bit more than the code requires here, but in talking with the rec. director, he seems to indicate that he thinks it'd be better to have the overflow parking at the other end of that lot. And he said there's really not that many times a year that they have a significant overflow, they use that gravel area. And after we started studying that, I think he's right, I think that's probably the better way to go, is to put overflow parking to the other end towards the field where we had actually planned a future parking extension anyway.
Just as a question, behind where you're showing the parking right now to the east is the area, I mean, could there be some space in that way if need be?
Yeah, there could be, if need be. We're trying to, these are going to be the large windows looking out, and we're trying to preserve as much landscape as we could here. But there, you'd have bottom land for the growing too. Just kind of go back to process, do that, working through the online surveys, gathering that data, through the brainstorming sessions, working with the library consultant to begin to initial, to agree with the initial program, beginning to figure out what size spaces should be, what the key spaces that everybody wants to see in the library. Working with the staff, looking at what trends are. Our library consultant developed a very good document, it's all the way down to linear feet shelving needed, based on current trends and what the trends of the community demographics are for the future. So you have a library the size, not just for now, with plenty of room to grow.
At what point is where is it projected that it will reach full capacity?
It depends on the, what we're looking at. There were some earlier census data projected that Harris County is much larger by now, and the growth kind of slowed down during the recession years.
Years of shutdown?
Yeah. But the way you're projecting now, I have to go back and look at the variables, but it's many years out, many, many years out. The intent here, we're going to begin with lower shelves, lower hotels, and as we grow, we can begin to compact the house a little bit, get taller shelves, and kind of grow into that space. And along the way, we can also be able to identify, there may be some spaces that may be worthy of expansion, and others may be worth of contraction. But there's a large, what's different about this library from the existing library is that there's a lot more big, open space available instead of a lot of small rooms to allow you to. All this is flexible. There's just columns here, there's no laws, no fixed walls, so we can begin to reshape this, and you can actually greatly increase and kind of dial in the right number of seating and shelves. You can get much, much denser shelves in there if that's what's required.
What delineates the columns?
I turned them off on this, just so it'd be easier to see the floor layer thing.
Backhand yarding, there's real confusion.
You'll end up with about nine, yeah, spread out across the building. The design intent, as we were looking at this, was trying to, we want to design this library so that it lines with the community center, it feels like it belongs together, it has a very unique identity, it has its own identity, has its own presence, its own gravitas. And that was a strong part of our thought process, how this building has its own identity. We began, this entry place, the entry point here, we have that large outdoor gathering spot. One of the things the community, the biggest thing of the feedback we got was, we want high-speed bandwidth, we got to have, we don't have enough, you know, high-speed bandwidth for people who work from home, students and so forth.
We just don't work from home.
Actually, we have. You can pay to that, too. What we were looking at, one of the things that people were asking for is after hours, how can I come up and take advantage of that with the limited hours? You know, Keith's looking at, like, I limited dollars for staff, what can we do? And so we actually provided a covered outdoor space, we'll have Wi-Fi access up front to be well-nit, be in the street. So students, not core projects, do you need some high-speed bandwidth? We'll offer, one of the unique things that was brought up, that a lot of modern emerging libraries, especially in rural areas, are beginning to offer, is like a mini Kinko's within that space, little business center for small businesses that may need to run a bunch of laser copy and color for presentation, do a little bit of large format printing, as they're witnessing to be able to do at home. So we've actually created a little business center with an adjacent conference room that could be used, I think you can check it out, but the idea is it would also be designed in such a way that it could be used for video conferences and teleconferences, to allow small businesses a place to, and the Chamber of Commerce was really excited about that as a feature to offer small businesses in the area. You have quite a number of people who are driving down to the lot, to take advantage of Wi-Fi, Starbucks, and other places to be able to work, and they're really interested in thought they might be able to work here, and staying here in Harris County and work. We're going to have, we're going to have a new maker space. That's one of the big trends in libraries, is libraries are kind of transitioning from a place of consumption to a place of creation and collaboration. And one of the sort of driving forces of getting people of all ages involved is having maker spaces, multi-purpose spaces. Probably seeing things about 3D printers, we're actually going to have 3D printers that have already been purchased, the state is giving funds, that are already going to be, we've got space for it. But what's interesting in surveys, and what we've seen in practice, is one of the biggest items that people are asking for are sewing machines. There are a lot of people who, young people, people new, who have not gotten into sewing before, a lot of people are asking for layout space for to do quilting circles and do crafts. So we're actually providing this sort of multi-purpose, multi-function space in the library. That's something that's emerging in libraries, and very successful, and supporting the community, stitching the community together. We'll have a dedicated computer lab, that can be, that can be closed off from the library to serve as a teaching role for teaching classes, but also it can be opened up, mostly they will be opened up to allow patrons to use those computers. Teens, for the first time, will have their own room, their own unique space, also closed off for, because we'll maybe see they can get one to get out of the stir than everybody else. What we've seen in the teen spaces that have been successful in other libraries are furniture that's designed to allow them to collaborate, especially collaborate around with school and stuff. If they're working on a project together at school, they can hook up their laptop to a large screen and can share that information and work together as a team, work together as a team to create things. The preschool area is going to be much larger than the existing, preschool and children's area is much larger than the existing library, a nice sense of whimsy, a whimsical, fun space, some nice sound control to let kids be kids, but not, you know, not overwhelm the adult reading area. We'll actually have a terrorist reading zone for students, for kids to have story time. We have meeting rooms that are, this, the meeting room is actually a little more than twice as big as the one currently at the library, and we'll have it, we've designed it such a way that it can be subdivided into two meeting rooms, you can have multiple meetings going on simultaneously as you begin to grow, you're going to have more people see this library as a place to support community functions. We've added room for the friends of the library for their book sale, a place, and a little cafe or fraud for them to be able to have their annual sales and to raise funds for their agenda. This is our initial schematic design of what the front library could begin to look like. As I mentioned, that large outdoor space at the entry, the covered area, we're using a lot of warm materials, terracotta, artificial metal, and some brick that begins to create the unique, warm feeling, yet that the large overhangs begin to be suggestive of the adjacent community center. The community center and the library are oriented the way they are, such that you have large windows facing north or south.
We've introduced the additional parking. But we want to keep the areas of windows. We don't have a lot of landscaping right there in front of the windows. It's not a sea of asphalt in front of your windows at the library.
Do you have any spaces for parking a lot of players on?
That's a good question. Right now, they're at the what's required for code for just the library. And some of the discussions I've had with John, and actually, your code's going to crack. You have a little bit more than the code requires here. But in talking with the rec director, he seems to indicate that he thinks it'd be better to have the overflow parking at the other end of that lot. And he said there's really not that many times a year that they have a significant overflow that they use that gravel area. And after we started studying that, I think he's right. I think that's probably the better way to go is to put overflow parking to the other end towards the fields where we had actually planned a future parking arrangement anyway.
Just as a question, behind where you're showing the parking right now to the east is the area. Could there be some expansion that way if need be?
Yeah, there could be if need be. We're trying to, these are going to be the large windows looking out. And we're trying to preserve as much landscape as we could here. But there, you'd have a lot of land for the growing too. Just kind of go back to process. Do that, working through the online surveys, gathering that data, through brainstorm sessions, working with the library consultant to begin to agree with the initial program, beginning to figure out what size spaces should be with the key spaces that everybody wants to see in the library. Working with staff, looking at what trends are. Our library consultant developed a very good document. It's all the way down to linear feed shelving needed based on current trends and what the trends of the community and demographics are for the future. So you have a library the size, not just for now, with plenty of room to grow.
At one point, where does it conjecture that it will reach full capacity?
It depends on the, we're looking at, there were some earlier census data projected. Harris County is much larger by now. And the growth kind of slowed down during the recession years.
Years or so.
Yeah. But the way you're projecting now, I have to go back and look at the variables, but it's many years out. Many, many years out. The intent here, we're going to begin with libraries and lower shelves, lower hotel. And as we grow, we can begin to compact the aisles a little bit, get taller shelves, and kind of grow into that space. And along the way, we can also be able to identify, there may be some spaces that may be worthy of expansion and others may be worth of contraction. But there's a large, what's different about this library from the existing library is that there's a lot more big, open space available instead of a lot of small rooms to allow you to, all this is flexible. There's just columns here, there's no laws, no fixed walls. So we can begin to reshape this. And you can actually greatly increase and kind of dial in the right number of seating and shelves. You can get much denser shelves in there if that's what's required.
What delineates the columns?
I turned them off on this, just so it would be easier to see the floor layer thing.
That kind of drawing, there's a real difference.
You'll end up with about nine, yeah, spread out across the building. The design intent, as we were looking at this, was trying to, we want to design this library so that it lines with the community center. It feels like it belongs together, it has a very unique identity, it has its own identity, has its own presence, its own gravitas. And that was a strong part of our thought process, how this building has its own identity. We began, this entry place, the entry point here, we have that large outdoor gathering spot. One of the things the community, the biggest thing of the feedback we got was we want high-speed bandwidth. We gotta have, we don't have enough, you know, high-speed bandwidth for people who work from home and students and so forth.
We just don't work from home.
Actually, I have. I'll give you a title that too. What we were looking at, one of the things that people were looking, were asking for is after hours. How can I come up and take advantage of that with the limited hours? You know, Keith's looking at, like, I got limited dollars for staff, what can we do? And so we actually provided a covered outdoor space that will have Wi-Fi access up front to be well-mitted, be in the street. So students, not core projects, do you need some high-speed bandwidth, they gather. We'll offer, one of the unique things that was brought up that a lot of modern emerging libraries, especially in rural areas, are beginning to offer is like a mini Kinko's within that space, a little business center for small businesses that may need to run a bunch of laser copy and color for presentation and do a little bit of large format printing as they're witnessing what they can do at home. So we've actually created a little business center with an adjacent conference room that could be used, for any of you that could check it out. But the idea is it would also be designed in such a way that it could be used for video conferences and teleconferences to allow small businesses a place to, and the Chamber of Commerce was really excited about that as a feature to offer small businesses in the area. You have quite a number of people who are driving down to the lawless to take advantage of Wi-Fi at Starbucks and other places to be able to work. And they're really interested in thought they might be able to work here and stay here in Harris County and work. We're going to have, we're going to have a new maker space. That's, it's one of the big trends in libraries is libraries are kind of transitioning from a place of consumption to a place of creation and collaboration. And one of the sort of driving forces of getting people of all ages involved is having maker spaces, multi-purpose spaces. Probably seeing things about 3D printers. We're actually going to have 3D printers that have already been purchased. The state is giving funds that are already going to be, we've got space for it. But what's interesting in surveys and what we've seen in practice is one of the biggest items that people are asking for are sewing machines. There are a lot of people who, young people, people new who have not gotten into sewing before. A lot of people are asking for layout space for to do quilting circles and do crafts. So we're actually providing this sort of a multi-purpose, multifunction space in the library. That's something that is emerging in libraries and very successful rooms and fully in, and supporting the community, stitching community going out. We'll have a dedicated computer lab. It can be closed off from the library to serve as a teaching role for teaching classes. But also it can be opened up, mostly they will be opened up to allow patrons to use those computers. Teens for the first time will have their own room, their own unique space. Also closed off for, because the little ones either can get one, it's a lot of stuff than everybody else. What we've seen in the teen spaces that have been successful in other libraries are furniture that's designed to allow them to collaborate, especially collaborate around with school and consulting. If they're working on a project together at school, they can hook up their laptop to a large screen and can share that information and work together as a team, work together as a team to create things. The preschool area is going to be much larger than the existing, preschool and children's area is much larger than the existing library. A nice sense of whimsy, a whimsical, fun space. Some nice sound control to let kids be kids, but not, you know, not overwhelm the adult reading area. We'll actually have a terrorist reading zone for students, for kids to have story time. We have meeting rooms that are, the meeting room is actually a little more than twice as big as the one currently at the library. And we'll have it, we've designed it such a way that it can be subdivided into two meeting rooms. You can have multiple meetings going on simultaneously as you begin to grow. You're going to have more people see this library as a place to support community functions. We've added room for the friends of the library for their book sale, a place, and a little cafe at fraud for them to be able to have their annual sales and to raise funds for their agenda. This is our initial schematic design of what the front library could begin to look like. As I mentioned, that large outdoor space, the entry recovery area. We're using a lot of warm materials, terracotta, artificial metal and some brick that begins to create the unique, warm feeling. Yet, the large overhangs begin to be suggestive of the adjacent community center. The community center and the library are oriented the way they are such that you have large windows facing north or south. On the south side, having that large overhang means that these windows will never receive the harsh glare and the heat in on what we have on a typical building if you didn't have the overhangs. We're also going to be using high-performance glass. If you've ever been in the meeting room at the community center in the middle of summer on a hot day, you can stand out a window and not feel the heat. And that's because of, even though it's facing south, it's because of two things. It's because it uses very high-performance glass and it has the sunshin going outside. So you can have the window blinds open in that room all the time and never have the harsh glare. And that was a thought process when we created that room that follows through here. So we can bring in lots of natural things like quality used in the landscape. Have areas, one of the big areas of concern of patrons is comfortable seating. There's not enough comfortable seating and flexible seating in the current library. So we're creating new zones of seating along the windows on both the adult side and the children's side. So those large windows bring in a nice even light without glare. Way we designed the, covered a lot of ground about designs. And this is an ongoing process. We're still, there's still a lot to be grown between now and the future.
How many square feet, square feet do you include, Scott?
Roughly fifteen thousand square feet. Which is approximately triple the size of the current library.
Is the building going to be designed with material if expansion, say, is needed soon in the near future? Can you be examined?
It can be examined. You're blessed with, you've got quite a lot of land out there. And because of the investment that the commissioners made early on, we developed that land. There was a decision made to go in and do master planning and bring in for that entire site for the master plan. So this whole pad, this whole area is already relatively flat. It used to be all rolling hills through there. That investment allows you, you know, that construction was done at a time when the market had hit the bottom and it was about the lowest cost you've ever do site development. So you had a real bargain that you're not going to have, that's money you invested early that you're not going to have to spend now for this building that gets to go into the building, into programming, into furniture, into landscape. I think that's a great advantage, because you've got plenty of room to expand on this site.
I have a question. I see the little squares that have a number, that's just kind of room numbers?
Yeah, room numbers.
I was just.
Well, you have room numbers, and then below it, you have the square footage of that particular thing.
I was just looking at meeting room one, it looks like two hundred and eighty-one.
See, that's just the room number. And that's, the room number is right now, this is early, because it'll be finalized. Right now, they're kind of meaningless. The number in the box at this point is kind of meaningless, just means that we've gone through so many iterations. At that point, you get up to two hundred and eighty-one versions of them.
Oh, okay.
That's, that was kind of meaningless. But the number below it, it has SF after it, that's a square footage. So you'll see that, like, meeting room one is seven hundred and thirty-five square feet. Away in comparison, the existing meeting space in the library is broader than five hundred square feet. So you have significantly larger meeting space. And this wall between meeting room one and two, that wall is an operable wall that will lift up. So you can have one large meeting space. You can host, you can have host functions much larger than you were able to do at the library before. That meeting space is larger than the community center meeting space, when it's fully open.
No, sir, but do you have a construction timeline?
We do. We're looking at, and the next part of what I want to talk about is the construction and delivery method. What we would like to do is bring in a construction manager at risk, use that on a delivery method for this project, that would allow us to start advertising now for a construction manager. That approach means you're hiring a construction manager who's a professional, is a professional service, like an engineer and architect. Bringing them in during the early part of the design phase is how you get your best value. My business partner, Sam, actually pioneered with the state well over a decade ago. I worked with board of regents, he's a facility advisor, or people work for state of regents, board of regents, for all the universities. And state colleges, they've moved to CM at risk as the delivery method for all the new buildings and substantial renovations. And what that allows you to do is if you bring in that construction manager, his function is he's reviewing cost and constructibility while the design's ongoing. And there's numerous examples I can give you over the years. But we've become true believers in this process where design decisions we're making in a vacuum, we may not realize that this subtle change actually is going to cost them tremendous amount of money to actually build because of difficulties, society difficulties and material. And by having that dialogue with them early, we can put more money into the value of the project, less money into things that we didn't remember were going to cost or other costs. They're able to do cost studies for us and figure out that, hey, if we go with this one material or this one solution, it's going to save that amount of money or it's going to cost that amount of money. And present us with options. With a community center, for example, we were able to explore, hey, what's the difference in cost between using it as a standard double deck and a gym versus an acoustical deck? Wasn't that much difference in cost. There's a huge difference when you walk in that gym and you make some noise in a gym and you don't hear this horrible echoes. And I've worked in gyms all over the state doing renovations. You can walk in these gyms and there's just so much echo. You can't have any other function in it above basketball. You've got a true multi-purpose space for causing that sound reduction. And that, that cost difference is so minor, it's like, yes, we're going to go ahead and do it. That kind of, that kind of feedback early on in the design process is very valuable. Assuming that you approved that approach, we would be able to get advertising for that this month. So that next month, we began interviewing, we'd have to make, we have a committee to make a final selection of that CM. So we could look at possibly by the end of October, having a CM onboard and we'll have documents to a higher level that they can actually begin pricing and reviewing, giving that feedback early. I was projecting the schedule today, kind of reviewing, looking at where that could put us. It would put us basically in February having, or January having a guaranteed maximum price in January. So it'll tell you, this is the maximum price for those or costs. We're not going to exceed this price. Any savings we get passes on to you. The, that puts us in February signing contracts with subs and beginning the ribbon cutting and initial buyouts and then ribbon cutting early March. And looking at probably roughly late in the, early December, kind of opening up the buildings and public.
We actually use a CM at risk for the forward management.
That's right. It produces great value that you cannot afford to do that building today. Part of the reason, most communities, for the price you did because the timing, the market was great. You got it at the time, construction costs low and everybody was struggling for work. But also that plus the value of that CM at risk, early, you know, information and feedback that allowed us to make choices and see where there's value and where there's not. And we were able to save, actually, the county, we saved several hundred thousand dollars over that project because of getting that feedback. And we were able to make those investments. We were able to see, okay, we will go ahead and develop this entire site, what is it going to cost us? Well, the cost at that time, it was an additional two hundred and fifty thousand dollars roughly for that entire site. You couldn't touch that today. That was a tremendous advantage, tremendous investment it has made. And it was a low-cost add-on to what was already being done out there. And that's the kind of value you get through CM at risk process.
Okay. Ready?
That's it.
While you're up here with the library.
And the CM at risk document was in your package.
Right, this is the draft advertisement for bid and process that we would post. If you guys approve it, we'd like to begin advertising rather than bringing us guys on early. And I assume that you, normally you're going to form a committee. And how do you want to form it? Is it same committee or a different committee to hire that, to make that selection? But we would work with you. It would be one person scoring on a committee and everybody else would add, and you have additional score on a committee. One of the benefits to our process and especially the same long experience with this process is that we've really begun to develop that document in such a way that we can weed out people that are general contractors that really don't know how to do CM at risk. Because it's really a professional service, it's not just a bid, there's more to it. And what we've discovered is if you have, you bring the right group in with great value, if you don't, you don't really gain value. And that's what that document represents, really years of research and experience and a lot of work with board of regents on hundreds of projects to develop that document in such a way that allows us to make sure we're getting a person with a team that's qualified, is well-qualified to do that function, that service.
We do have with us tonight Keith Sherwin, who's regional director of the, our library assistant at RAN, true, true Harris County library system. And Keith, would you like to introduce someone else?
Sure. We have the honor of having our new manager, Stephanie Green, frauds. Stephanie comes to us from the Columbus Public Library where she worked in a variety of different capacities for a few years. She made the front page of newspaper, just a little out of it. And we're so excited to have her here and have her bring her expertise and skills and help us shepherd our services into this new building, which honestly is just going to be amazing. I, I can't say, this isn't the first new library built, this is the second. But the level of service and responsiveness we've gotten from 2WR up to this point has been really, really outstanding. So thank you. And welcome, Stephanie.
Okay, do you want to say anything to anybody, or we're just waiting for that?
I just want to say thank you to the communities, the library for hiring me on. I'm happy to be here. I'm happy to be part of Harris County. Actually, I've been trying to get here since last year. So just excited to be here and excited for the new building and hopefully we'll be able to continue the same service that we've given in the past years.
Thank you. Okay. Do you want to say anything about?
No, sir, except that the Georgia laws used to provide that you had to take the lowest bidder. But now, a few years ago, they came in and made it, and there's several different methods. One of which is this construction manager at risk. And I think it has gotten to now that it's almost burning, but, and do something like this. I've looked at this agreement and it appears to be, this is a bid, a solicitation for the construction manager at risk. And I think it appears to be appropriate and it appears similar to most of all the other type of agreements like this, listing these bids. And then you will still have the, I've got you to come in and select the bidder that they brought them in to you.
Yeah, the selection process is really, is really controlled by you. We'll, we'll be one vote, and we'll be there as advisors. But it's, you'll be sitting down with us and going through the score and the material. Do want to emphasize that CM at risk, there's still eighty-five percent of that construction budget is still a competitive bid process. What they're doing, we're taking advantage of it and making it a professional service, which are making the subs, the market, the bid options. You still have a competitive bid on packages and services. The advantage for communities is they're not forced to take the lowest bidder for each of these services. The construction manager helps you pre-qualify these, where you're not stuck inside the local, local, out-of-town firm that doesn't really have the experience doing something that they could do.
The head risk part comes when the construction manager says it won't be, if this is the number that comes above that, he's got to pick up the tab.
That's right.
All right. Say we need to approve this, or at least it is going out.
Can we form so they can go ahead?
Yeah.
Go ahead and bid.
I would like that. Is there, we're going to have a discussion?
Yeah.
The first question is, is the, not two million dollars from the state available or will it become available?
It's available already.
It's affordable, isn't it?
Full to the state, yes.
Today, we have three point seven million dollars. And that includes, I think, fifteen thousand dollars in donations. That, we are bidding on a four point four million dollar project. The, other than taking it out of general funds, we won't have enough money by the time it's finished unless we are going to ramp up donations or make changes.
Couple of things. We do, we will be working with you as far as creating, at this point, we got the design to a point where we can start generating the sexy images that began, the naming rights, the naming rights to children's centers was always a big, big thing. Naming rights, you may have the Burger King Teen Center, or Sichuan Enterprises Teen Center. We'll do that to help you with the funds. There's, it sounds like there's probably still going to be a gap. Part of that, having that process, that CM onboard early allows us to get that feedback on cost and where we are now and help us to figure out where can we begin to cut without, you know, impacting the quality of the building. Where can we begin to cut back and figure out, okay, what can we push to the future and what can we, what can we really need to do now? And make those hard choices. We're going to meet the budget, then you tell us that's the number we need to hit.
In your experience, how long will it take to reach the donations, the donations which level which will allow us to construct without having to take money out of general funds?
That's a hugely variable. You know, there's some cities that, that's fairly short business if you're on that area.
Well, we got, we got, and these are part of Commissioner Wood's numbers. We've got two million from the state, and that is fully available. We have our billion and a half from the two thousand and nine squash, and that's all there. So that's the three and a half million. And then we've got another half a million that's going to be provided by this current squash. So that'll put us at four. And we are actually really just waiting. There will be a fundraising campaign that's going to kind of target a billion dollars. Fundraising campaign, we've already got two or three folks that are going to hit that campaign. So soon as we get the actual visuals of what it's going to look like and if this is the layout, we can then do the naming areas at the start. There have been a couple of preliminary conversations with corporate entities who have indicated that they would give us sizable.
If you look at the squash funds that has been collected now, you would reasonably expect that you won't have the five hundred thousand dollars till the end of squash.
That's true. That's true.
So you're going to have to take of, at least, depending on how much, from seven hundred thousand to, you know, or to up to, you know, a hundred thousand dollars to get the building built, depending on how much donation you give.
Well, that's, that's true. I think certainly we count on the four, because that would be the, yeah, there may be a little of that. If you spread it all evenly, you know, the squash funds, yet we still have another year and a half of loss left. Typically, we have some funds remaining in, but yeah, that's it. And then as far as the actual campaign to raise money, I think we'll get that started fairly soon because this is going to be a session we can start presenting it to people. And we do have the owner of a large business that has agreed to go with a couple of other folks to call on major businesses in this area, from this area to solicit funds.
Are you looking at bonding any of this?
I don't think so.
My other concern is if you're increasing a building three times, you're increasing the materials in the building fifteen percent. Of course, you use, you have a lot of different activities in there. And basically, if you took the size of the building now and you did, projected it over the number of years to reach full capacity, you're talking about thirty-five years to fifty?
Let me.
Growth at two percent?
The library consultant has run those numbers on, I'm sorry to break that for you tonight. I can give you more accurate, more specific feedback on that. Because he did it looking at different projections of the growth percent and across those sort of demographic categories where you like. of where you'd like to grow, what that would be. Let me, let me get that information to you.
Good question.
What are we going to do with current library?
Well, it's ours, and we, we'll have to make that decision what we want to do with it. It belongs to Harris County.
So, I'm just throwing this out to the soul, the library's funds that didn't collect the same off the grid.
I think, you know, anything's a possibility at this point in time, whether we need to move a couple of departments over that way, or make it a storage type, file storage type thing. There are just a number of possibilities, but it's going to be for order commissioners to decide when that comes about.
So, let me make sure I'm clear. On your timeline, you're talking about possibility, or on your timeline, breaking ground in March?
Yes.
Of twenty seventeen.
Right. Do we finish? We think that this building could be finished, depending on whether, probably late November, early December. Of course, once we have a CM on board, they may tell me too aggressively, but I think it's fairly reasonable for the size of this building. What has some individual spaces a little more complicated. The bulk of the building is one big open area, so it's not a hugely complex building to build.
And Harry, you mentioned the fundraising campaign. When will that cross, when will that be done?
Again, as soon as we get the graphics of the design from the inside and the rooms. Just the sex of pictures. The sex of pictures. Yeah. All right, any other questions, comments? All right, and I guess, I don't know, do we need a vote to do this, or just a consensus? Or what do you think, Kevin?
I think you need to vote to popularize him to advertise for it.
Okay.
CM at risk, you know, the basic design and layout, sort of have something to produce for a campaigner.
When will the design and layout be released for the campaign? It's been asked, I originally made a donation over two years ago, and as far as I know, only individuals made a donation to this company, other than friends of the library.
I think we're at a point now that we've, we've got the design well enough that we can actually start to invest the time to begin to show what this inside looks like, what these rooms of light begin to suggest, create those sexy images where you can, we just now have reached that point where we've got all the feedback and feel comfortable putting something out there that you can back up, rather than putting something out there that looks sexy, but you're never going to be able to deliver on.
And I have the savings on change, if I'm actually put the piece up.
So, when, when do you think you would have to be able to go to potential donors with?
I believe that we can, at the end of this month, first October, we're going to have, I mean, you've already got this image, released a more refinement of this one, but we'll begin to do some elevations of the, of the children's area, which I think is always a good, you know, that's one thing we'll start with. The teen center, which is a new area, where I think you may have some interest in donating. I know Pratt-Wendy's very interested in makerspaces, and they've been very involved and very interested in the Columbus Makerspace. They may want to partner and staple, grant some money for this Makerspace. So, this is some thoughts on what we're thinking about.
I believe your preliminary thought was somewhere around four point four billion?
That would be us.
For the library, so, and I guess we, we hope to do more, because that means we can put more into it, more books, more viewers.
The advantage is you've got a substantial amount of money from the state that has set aside to expand your collection and provide for technology, which is a tremendous boost to the library.
Does the four point four billion, does that include the CM at risk?
That, yeah, that's, that includes their services, yes.
It does?
Yes.
The CM at risk, cost of that, including?
It also, it's turnkey, it also includes furniture, which a lot of times when we put prices on buildings, we're not telling you furniture, this includes the furniture budget, which, I mean, this is a very furniture-intensive building.
So, it does include furniture, landscape?
Yes. Yeah, but the degree of landscape, I mean, it's going to depend on how much the building is. You know, we were fortunate in the, in the community center that we were able to deliver that building, and the cost allowed us to make a significant investment. That's a, that's a lot of landscape that's planted for that building. I would love to see something along the same lines, and especially in these, where they have these large windows looking out over land, from the north and the south, and the north side, you know, this, the gardens that the community suggested, the one, the community gardens and children's activity gardens. The backdrop for that is the forest line, back there, there'll always be forest, which is great, a little bit of a rolling hill too, a little berm, which is nice. And then you create this sort of zone between that and that, the swimming pool portion, the auditorium portion of the community center, creates a nice sort of protected zone. And I was talking with Harry about this, originally, we envisioned a master plan, we planned the playground, future playground to be over there with ball fields, but as we started looking at this, and you've got the outdoor courtyard space of the community center adjacent, I think this is a really rich potential zone for a children's playground that's protected and uncontrollable, rather than having it go out there on the other end of the field, you know, more eyes on it. Just to be clear, that playground's completely not in.
The entrance faces south.
Yes.
Doesn't on that, the drawing one faces?
No, this is, this is the south.
No, no, on the first one, ship. Turn the ship faces east?
This is north, so that's your south entrance, right? So, same as the community center, the entrance is facing south. You know, if you've been in either the auditorium or the gym, I think, especially during retirement, you begin to see that there's, you really just don't have a harsh glare that a lot of buildings have because of that overhanged orientation type of glass, that the quality of daylight in that gym, you can almost put basketball lights on. I mean, it's, it's a certain time today, get really nice evening light without a harsh glare. And that's, that's what we're going to create as well, the, the reading spaces, is an environment that you have nice views of the landscape, you have nice quality daylight, but you don't have a harsh glare, that's going to be protectable.
Lee, I don't, I don't, put the internal screen up. I don't, if you mentioned this, I didn't hear it, but the walls on the east end there, where there's going to be the computer room, those are glass walls, so it's.
They'll have a little bit of glass at this corner.
Well, I'm talking the interior.
Oh, the interior, yes, yes. Yeah, the idea is that, the same thing that we did at the community center, which is the most successful, so many community centers and libraries, you go into, all those spaces are walled off completely with no windows, and nobody has any idea of the activities and features of the building offers, the services that are being offered. We actually did some major renovations in Big County, in Macon, for the recreation department, and they have computer labs in their recreation centers, and nobody knew about them, took advantage of them, because they just knew they were there. And so, one of the things we did in the redesign was putting in windows to allow people, and it's right up front, you can see the activity, you can see the classes, you know, and I think the success we had at the community center was all that internal glass, so when you stand there and come in that front door, you can see the activity of the gym, you see that community and that touring, you see that activity in the meeting space, and it's engaging the community, it's engaging the user. And that's the same philosophy we carry over to this building, so you have lots of windows between the Makerspace and the library. These are large roll-up mass doors that can close down, avoid activities, but allowing that activity, the people to see that what's available, what the library does, you know, maybe makes this kids, being able to watch other kids' three D prints and handle them, like learn with that, or some logistics, actually be able to see computer classes going on, and for teens to be able to see their, their friends gather around, what's, gather around playing game, or doing homework, or whatever.
And put all the rooms on the left side, solid walls, there?
Well, this is, in the conference room, the intent is, this is glass, from here to here, a little bit of glass between.
Oh.
So that, yes, you see that, you see that zone. What we'll do is, actually, we'll do what's called a surrender of the glass, and when you're sitting down, it'll feel a little bit more private, but when you stand up, you're actually seeing across the library's staff walk by and see the activity in there.
Are either rooms, conference rooms, closed completely, or have conferences or?
Well, I mean, you have staff area that's, that's closed off completely. We, right now, we're showing this, the third conference room, it, it's some debate whether we'll, whether to have windows there or not, but it's, because it's down the hall, it's a little, it's a little more private. They, one of the desires mentioned from Chamber of Commerce folks is that it'd be easier for them to help sell people, the community is a place to live and work. If there was a, a place that somebody could rent for a day to have, maybe they could have, bring in clients and have, or do a conference call, or maybe smaller meeting clients, or a team of people. And so, that's what we kind of felt like, like these two conference rooms would serve those functions, and then there may be some people who would rather have their functions a little more private, this conference room's intended to be more open and, and sort of community-oriented too.
For meeting rooms one and two, are those more often?
Well, the intention is, is that we'll have, the store just a little bit of glass on each side, just to, it's only, because of the angles involved, you're only going to really see there's activity. You're not going to, there's not a lot of glass in those rooms.
The four point four million includes estimates, includes the building?
Yeah.
Furniture context?
Building and furniture context, or landscape and, and residence or civil, yes.
Looking at the business center, it's fairly sophisticated, pretty available. Also, there's going to be charges for the services.
That's, yes, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a center of potential revenue, and, you know, it's a sliding scale, kind of where you're going to hit that, I think Keith may have some feedback on that as well, but yes, it's a, it's a way to generate revenue. I think also these conference rooms become a way to generate revenue for small businesses. Instead of, you may rent it out to the local, you know, school council, they won't, I mean, they may not pay anything, but to somebody that wants to use it for teleconference, they should probably pay something for that. I think there's a value to that, that you're offering them high bandwidth, which is hard to find in the area, and you're offering them, so they don't have to invest in the technology, it's already there, turnkey. That's, that's a huge.
They don't have to travel somewhere else.
Right.
Plan on clothes.
Right. Because there's quite a number of people that telecommute from Harris County. I was surprised, as we started the research, we're just bidding for space, because they have to drive somewhere else often, just to get work done.
Anything else? All right.
I have just one question. The areas that we've got a little access, are those study cars, no, no, why is very middle of the bottom?
Oh, these?
No.
Those to the left. I'm sorry, yes. Well, those are actually, it, it, it's really hard to describe these without seeing the picture, but those are, where you can sit down, single person can sit down in kind of a slightly refined position, has a table for a laptop and an iPad, and you're within the library, but you're, when you're sitting down, you kind of have this translucent panels around you, so you feel like you're private within a more public zone. And it's just a suggested furniture. The furniture is, is still very schematic at this point, but we've, we've identified certain pieces of furniture and certain vendors that have really good library, modern library furniture, that we really supported the mission. These curved bookcases, they're actually, can be configured to be mobile, so they can be reconfigured and moved around as we need to, these as well. The idea is that you have this zone that's sort of semi-private in the middle, but because the, the books have gaps, and the gap between the shelf and, you know, top of the book, there's some, some transparency there as well, so staff can monitor and, and not, you can't control the activity. When you're in that space, you feel a little more comfortable sharing about the print or planning.
How many volumes of books do you think that this will hold?
I don't have those numbers.
I have those numbers.
They're all around here looking at me. Currently, I want to say the Harris County Public Library probably has something in the range of forty, forty-five thousand volumes, that includes books, related media, audio books, DVDs, and things of that nature. So, with an expansion potential of, what are we saying?
I mean, you have three times the space, but.
How many do the chart, how many do the chart lobby hold?
Right, we, we have forty thousand, roughly. I would have.
Will this be more or less?
Oh, more, more, yeah, yeah, absolutely. Our circulation's still going up, so that's.
I mean, I, I would feel comfortable saying, if you're down forty thousand currently, you can do a hundred and twenty thousand here.
Which is a very large.
That's a very large population. What you may find is, as money grows and changes, that you may have other services and functions that you may not all be circulation of course, and the other things that the space becomes. One interesting comment that, in the research from Library Consultant, you know, digital books have this real tremendous takeoff, but it's sort of leveled out, and the paper print books still have strong demand, and it's sort of leveled out, it hasn't, there's no longer this practical climb in.
Anything else? All right, now, let me take a motion for approval, basically, of the plan as it's been presented so far, and to move forward with the preparation of the coat for CM at risk.
I'll make a motion.
Motion, second. Any other discussion? All in favor, simply vibrating your hand. Motion, here. All right. Thank you, sir. So, we will look forward to getting some good pictures from you soon, so we can start our other fundraising. Thank you. All right, the next item on the agenda.
Keith, would you give a call now, please?
Yeah. All right, the next item on the agenda is corporate hangars at the airport. And I appreciate all of, all of y'all being available, kind of give us a go-ahead. We, actually, the first coat was put down on the hangar floors. There was some bleed-through that actually showed the pattern and whatnot of the, of the gra- aggregate in the floor below, and particularly in the areas where we had to do, they had to do the heavy sanding, you know, because of uneven floor, we're getting that from the contractor. So, this is really to ratify, I think, I told you, it'd be twelve, thirteen thousand dollars, but it came in thirteen thousand. I have been out and looked at it, and it certainly makes a big difference. You can still, still tell in a few spots, if the light's just right, you can tell that something was there, and so it really looked real good. It had to be done that way, because they put down the first coat, and the second coat had to get, get down within twenty-four hours for it to properly adhere to the other coat. So, tonight, this is on the agenda to just ratify that decision. And I will, aligned with that, the BMK, the original contractor, completed all of their punch list items. The floors are now, now ready, and the first corporate hangar is going to be rented by the airport, airplane mechanic, Ben Brown, and he will be moving into that hangar October one.
The hangar that's had floor issues, is that's where he's moving?
Yes. Both of them had some floor issues, both of them had floor issues, but the one he's moving is, has the worst. It, it looks, it looks great. If y'all are out there, please take, take the time to go take, go look at it. So, I guess, since I called on y'all, I will make the, the motion to approve this thirteen thousand dollar modification. Second. The motion, second, discussion.
I have, I have one question.
Yes.
This is for my education. Who has oversight for the projects at the airport?
I'm not quite sure what you mean, pond and company, because our consultant is supposed to have primary, they're there, and overseeing all of that, and as well as Bill Chan. Uh, it is supposed to have primary, they're there, uh, and overseeing all of that, and as well as Bill Chen, and he's our airport manager.
So, but, so Pond and Company?
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right. All, any other questions? All in favor, simply by raising your hand. Motion carries. Next is, uh, appointment of Recreation Board. Aaron Wine, who has resigned his position as a man-at-large representative. His term would normally have expired December thirty-one, two thousand seventeen. They had an individual by the name of Christie LaFortune has submitted a letter indicating her interest in serving on the Rec Board. And if you've had an opportunity to review that, whether you want to, do we have any kind of recommendation from the Rec Board?
Because the Rec Board had three applicants, and they did recommend that with concerns of it.
All right. So I will entertain the motion.
I'll make the motion that we approve this application for the Rec Board.
All right.
Second.
We got a motion in a second. Any other discussion? All in favor, simply by raising your hand. Motion carries. Anything else on the new business? All right, and then we move into county manager's portion. Mrs. McMichael, if you will tell us about, uh, whatever you need to tell us about the King's Gap.
The first one is the King's Gap paving portion. The bids were requested, and they came in, they were opened this morning, as a matter of fact. And, um, even though the, the request was made by four companies, only one submitted a bid. And that bid with the alternate for final stabilization of the grass and so forth is four, four hundred sixty-five thousand, seven hundred fifty-two dollars. And it's the recommendation of the engineer that we were to bid to Robinson Paving to make that bid. And just as a reminder, the grant amount we got from D C A was five hundred thousand dollars. Which sounds great when you look at the bid, but, um, as of our last drawdown, we had a balance of three hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars, because we've already had to pay for materials and rock that, to do the part that we had to do. So with this, the county's going to have to pay more money on this part, which we knew that upfront, that we were going to pay something else. And as a, another caveat, because we only received one bid, that causes issues from the D C A standpoint, and they're going to require a letter from us, which, um, the R V R C is in the midst of preparing for me to put on letter for Harry to sign, and providing them information as to where it was advertised, who got the bid, who got the packages, where the bid came from, that kind of thing. So, um, even though we can award the bid, we can't give a notice to proceed until D C A does that part, which could delay the project a little or so.
Okay. My question was going to be, do we have any idea when they'll begin?
When the, uh, until D C A does their thing.
Okay.
So the letter should be prepared this week for Harry to sign and for us to send off. And I understand it'll take D C A a month. Not sure why, because this has been a long project.
But it's, once they, once they approve, right, it's all going to be ready to go?
My understanding is, well, the bid's on the weather, you know, it could be. But, yes, ma'am. Well, I was always at the meeting this morning, and they hope they'll be ready to go, depending on what their schedule turns out to be. They could be on something else when this gets ready to go.
Well, we hope we get those term lines, the Mount Hill, three fifteen. The barrels have been out there for eight weeks.
Yes, ma'am.
So, we're hoping they're going to do that, before they do anything else.
They, they do a lot of work in Harris County, so, um, yes, ma'am, I understand, yes, ma'am. Okay.
Mrs. McMichael, if you would, what is, tell me again what the numbers were we have already expended, how much?
Uh, the, the balance says of the last drawdown.
Was it balance?
The balance is three hundred fifty-three thousand, which is, the difference in that balance that's, at that time, and this bid is a hundred and sixteen, you would take a few thousand dollars. That doesn't mean there aren't more expenses out there. There could be some, um, payments that we've made that we have not yet been, been reimbursed through another drawdown. So that's going to make our costs a little greater.
Refresh my memory, um, what was the discussion, when the initial grant was half million?
And that's all we're going to get, period.
And, and even at that point in time, we thought we were going to have to expend how much more?
I couldn't find that number, but I want to say we thought, our part was not going to cost all that much, but it, what we ended up having to do cost more than what we thought. Plus the R V C, R V R C speed comes out of that. The, and the, the engineer part comes out of the county. And then we have all the materials that we had to buy for us to do our work, the rock, the drain, the pipe, gravel, that kind of stuff.
And, and refresh my memory, how did we end up with E M C as agent? I don't recall.
Our, our V R C was the administrator of the grant when we made the application. They were responsible for doing the bidding, and y'all had to approve that award to E M C.
Okay. That's what I, and I couldn't.
This has been going on since two thousand twelve.
I know, for a long, I know, a long time. I couldn't remember.
And it had to be E M C. So at this point.
I think that was another one where they had done some work, they already did too, but they, something for that area.
Well, that's when they had to go out and bid to do the, all the, um, drawings and so forth, so, yes, all that. And there's, and they do weekly inspections, the rain or shine, so their work is a bit expensive. I could probably get you the figure of where we stand with what we still have to be reimbursed for from the grant, but regardless, we're basically committed.
Um, do you remember, I, I saw, you have Mike Brown, and you believe that they kind of gave his status and where he was, the five percent of he was.
Yes, I did get an email, um, and I don't think I brought it with me.
Anyway, a lot of good progress has been paid.
Yes, oh, yeah.
He, he is, we're ninety-five percent through, except for this pay.
He plans on being finished pretty soon, yes. Because he's got, he's got to get out of there before the paving company can go in. So if D C A happens to make that other determination.
There are a few more telephone calls that.
Yes.
A T and C and the Verbset, that's just, still, yet, they are working with us.
Moving at their own speed. So I need a motion to vote to award the bid to Robinson Paving.
And you said D C A will be okay with that after we give them the, what we did?
My understanding is D C A usually doesn't have a big issue when it results in one bidder, if they have all the documents they need to make that determination, yes. But it'll take them months to do so. Maybe it doesn't process.
Okay.
Did this bid amount come in as, about, were you just waiting, do you know?
That wasn't early discussed, but I would think it pretty much did, because this is, this is, um, you know, paving's not cheap anymore.
No, no, I realize, I just didn't know.
And these costs, I believe, are, um, these are lump sums. That's a lump sum.
I'll make the recommendation that this be accepted, since it was my initiative that this project had started.
And, uh, second, this is in the district, and I think it needs to be.
Got a motion in a second. Any other discussion or questions? All in favor, please, simply by raising your hand. Thank you. Next is job description and classification of communications officer.
Yes, sir, um, through, when we did the recent compensation and classification study, the position of communications, uh, G C I C, TAC officer slipped through the cracks, or likely a better word. Uh, that person who does the G C I C and TAC work has additional duties above the normal communications officer, which they also do those. It's recommended that, that, this position be in a grade eleven, which is one grade above the communications officer, with a start rate of twelve fifty-nine an hour.
Is that salary already included in our budget, or is that?
Uh, probably nine-one-one has got funds in there, um, because it's all, this is turnover.
It, it's not a new position, it's.
No, some of them are there.
The position's already there at the grade ten, so.
I realize, I just didn't know. We, we kind of incorporated the salary study, if that, you know, was still there, or could have been dropped for some reason.
It, you just, you just got overlooked. The person's there.
Just, and you said.
The job is just here. Uh, to the most part, I would say, he probably has it in his budget based on just turnover. New people come in, aren't going to make as much as the ones going, could have gone. So he's going to have enough in there, probably. And then I think he has a little bit of overtime line that can use, be used to it. But for you is the job description, the red part is the additional duties that that particular person does.
And what's in black is.
Is what's in the, the normal communication officer's job description. And eventually I'll get all those printed out, and you can all tell you. No paper.
All right, we have a motion.
I'll make the motion that we approve.
I'll second, motion in a second, any other discussion?
I have one other question. Is, was the employee aware of this?
Yes, she is. I did contact her and tell her that the board was taking action.
Okay, thank you.
Or would be looking at it, considering it tonight, and if approved, it would be retroactive back to July first.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, in favor, please, simply by raising your hand. If she cares.
Thank you.
Okay, furniture for nine-one-one.
Yeah. Some of you have been out there, and some of you haven't, and if you were working out there, you wouldn't want to sit in those chairs, because the length of time they have to sit in them. I think the last time we got chairs there was several years ago, I'm not sure how long ago, but they were twenty-four hour chairs. We looked at five different chairs, we gave the, all the personnel out there an opportunity to look at the chairs, choose the ones they wanted, we gave the descriptions, schematics, whatever, and they all chose the same one. Which is a twenty-four-seven chair, it's, um, I think it's for three hundred and nine dollars. It's, uh, got a weight capacity of three hundred and fifty plus pounds, so even the teeny-tight ones should have plenty of comfy space, and the bigger ones should too. But, they're a darn needed, needing chairs. We're suggesting we offer, order five, four is continuous use, and one's a backup, because I'm sure one at some point's going to lose a wheel or something. Uh, the funding can come from fund balance, or contingency, Paul has got a copy of this, so he's aware of us making this request.
All right, we have a motion.
I'll make the motion that we approve the purchase of those five chairs.
Thanks.
I'm sorry, who's the second?
Julie.
Do we need to state, uh, the source of the funds?
I'll put it in the motion.
Not for you. Shouldn't we use contingency first, and then reenter these?
I think you only have about eight thousand in the contingency, I believe. I don't think we've used any yet, I don't think we have. Yeah, let's take that.
Contingency.
Okay.
Any other questions? All in favor, simply by raising your hand. Extend the voting hours.
Yes, sir, um, Sherrell has asked that we consider extending, excuse me, voting hours for the upcoming election. There's going to be, uh, three, six, nine, twelve, thirteen questions for positions, uh, or, uh, officials, and then four constitutional amendments, which is going to cause a longer line than normal. And she's suggesting we extend the hours from five P M. to seven P M. just during the week before the election, October thirty-first through November fourth. So there'll be two hours per day extra. Some counties are staying open Saturdays and Sundays, and she's not particularly in favor of that. And she just made the cost of those extended hours, which amounts to ten hours, to be eight hundred dollars.
How many hall workers would be needed? Who was for that?
She usually has one, if not two, there with her, because when she, when they're out, we sort of have to hunt.
Probably it'd be eighty dollars an hour.
It's not eighty dollars an hour, I'm not sure what all the expenses are, she didn't give me a breakdown of what those were. She offered to be here tonight, I, she gave me a price, so, her time, she's got her time, there's two extra hours for her, that'd be overtime. So she's a time and a half there, if there's no, there's no holiday that week. So she'll be there, and then you've got at least one, if not two, hall workers, or workers there with her to help.
I just like to know where the eight hundred comes from, just so that you should be able to, as a total.
No, you don't have to vote on the dollar amount, just, uh, uh, vote to approve, and I'll give you, I'll get the exact cost from Brett Mar, and I'll email you, and we'll just, so we all have a better figure of where it's coming from, a better breakdown.
Does she have to go to the Justice Department, listen?
I don't believe so, she didn't mention that at all.
All right, let me play a motion.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Any other discussion or questions?
Was she, I, was she willing to give us any kind of estimates, what she, what help she thought this would, would give?
It's meant to have people who have, don't get off until a final call.
Yeah, but, like, number wise, it's significant of them. To make enough of an impact, if to do, I know what that would be.
I'll call the last presidential election. We have long lines in our office.
Yeah.
The closer it got, the longer the lines got. I mean, they were down the hall, back up there.
Yeah, there's so many elections a day, I'm just.
Years from now, they're going to have that, yeah. They may cut down on some lines at the precincts.
But it's, in my opinion, it's a small amount of money to offer the convenience.
Yeah.
Just trying to understand the full impact, and if it really will help, right, and will not.
I don't think that's even, I don't think that's even cheap or nails.
You're sure that's true? Oh, no, I mean, I know, but it's.
We're thinking of having, I'm sure the news gets out.
Okay, uh, we have a motion in a second, any other questions? All in favor, simply by raising your hand. If you care. Okay, personnel request, Chris.
Couple of weeks ago, I met with some of the deputy warden, lieutenant, both of the lieutenants, and a couple of other people regarding issues at the prison. The result being that they really need four additional detention officers, two on the inside, and two on the outside, and the two on the outside would help with the right-of-way issues that I'm sure we're all getting complaints about, one way or the other. The detention officers, as you know, we increased the number of inmates to about a hundred and fifteen. We were able to reduce the number for a short time, and they brought, went back in, brought another back to a room, so we're not getting help there than we were seven weeks ago. They feel there's a need, these, and these were not budgeted. We started paying four detention officers, it's thirteen twenty-two an hour, and they work on twelve-hour shifts. Right? Yes. And deputy ward is here to answer any questions.
How many hours, are they at the twenty, two thousand and eighty hours for the year, or what's the actual?
They're, they work eighty-four, eighty-five hours every two weeks, so that's, that's it, it's twenty-two.
Since we just finished with the budget, I guess my question was.
What did I do?
Yeah, well, five of us, was this lead not recognized soon?
You would have to ask the person who submitted the bids that question, and he has none.
Thank you.
Either one of them.
Yeah, I sat in on the meeting, and there was no discussion, no request for additional people.
Yeah, I sat in on the meeting and there was no discussion, no request for additional people.
I guess they, it was that they had been functioning with the increase of the inmates at their present level, but the, it's harder to get people to cover shifts when someone is out sick or what have you, and you have to have more than two people controlling a hundred and fifty inmates inside the prison. One person has to stay in the control room, they're not supposed to leave the control room. That means if you want to have two people, but there's one, with, hopefully everybody's locked up.
And this way it's been, been operated?
This way it's been being operated, to, for the most part.
Yes, that, that, that's the way, that's what can happen, especially if you have an issue like, um, we had a personnel and they had a baby, so we had to compensate for that. You have one who have many issues, you have to compensate for that. And so, basically, if you look at, ultimately, you, you, you have to give feedback to your officers of what they really need. So, I know Lieutenant Garrett, thanks for being here, we've spoke and we've talked to the officers, and a lot of feedback is, they feel they need more, and I do agree with that, I absolutely agree with it. It's, it's like tensing a muscle, it can be done, but in time, there has to be a relaxation, not, not a relaxation in the sense that people don't want to work, but in the sense of a reprieve to that constant, um, that constant necessity being placed on there. For example, um, Ms. Jones was kind enough to help us work up some of our numbers, we have, currently, we have a detention officer, correctional officer rather, he has two hundred ninety-four point eighteen comp time. So if we were able to have more personnel on the inside, then we can kind of compensate, let these guys take some of that well-earned vacation and comp time, kind of get them back on even keel again, and, um, provide better services, more safely for outside the institution as well for inside the institution. If it runs well on the outside, that makes it run better on the inside and vice versa.
When you're talking outside, you know that crews that go out and do different work?
Yes, sir.
Roughly, that's around twenty-nine thousand dollars each position for the year.
And that doesn't include their benefits or?
Yeah, that's just the salary, so, for, it's approaching a hundred, a hundred and fifty thousand or fifteen.
Please, when you mentioned it helping with the cutting of the road right away, um, I thought I understood that the inmates could not be on the wood cutting blocks.
This, this would not be for them to cut on, usually that equipment, it'd be using, well, we have inmates that maintain our, our lawns, that maintain the airport, um...
But they, they also, you know, they, they will mow the size of the road and also utilize bush axes, weed eaters, all kinds of preparations of equipment.
So how many, how many inmates do you have that have not been able to go out on work crews because lacking the law officers?
Well, I think maybe a better way to answer that is, we could probably, I put a number on it, we probably could say about thirty percent greater of our population if we were able to do that. And, you know, you see the county roads, they, they need more, they need more presence, they need more, um, they need more work done to, obviously, we can, with all of the roads together, so hopefully that answers the question of did it all come together.
I guess what it sounds like to me is, is you've got excess prisoners who are having to, to stay locked up because you don't have the outside officers to supervise, is that accurate?
Yes, ma'am, I would say that's.
Then I just didn't know about how many of those inmates would then be able to be out.
Twenty, twenty more would be an maximum, uh, ten, ten inmates per, it's okay, it's okay.